Okay, welcome everybody. I call this meeting to order. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting, June 1st, 2022. This meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order on March 12th, 2020, and extended on June 16th, 2021. For the public to join the meeting remotely through Zoom, please use the link posted on the agenda on the town's website. The governor's order, along with all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body, is available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, all members of this meeting who will participate computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Thank you. We don't stand for -- oh, is anyone else recording this meeting? Four, sorry, okay. It's Stanford, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a full house tonight. Yeah. So, Dr. Chamberlain, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, before we begin the meeting, we'd like to take a moment, to take a moment of silence for the students and families of Uvalde, Texas, as they face this inexplicable and devastating loss. We stand with them, we pray for peace, and we look forward to a better world for all of our kids. We'll take a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, there really are no words for the tragedy that has happened. We just pray for better days. Dr. Chamberlain, do you think that our schools are safe and our protocols are up to par at this time?
Madam Chair, if you did, I did add on to the agenda in a few minutes. Once we start the superintendent's report, we'll have a discussion about school safety.
Okay, great.
I think it's an appropriate topic to address this evening, for sure.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Certainly have citizens.
I know. Special recognitions?
We do have one, Madam Chair, that was unable to make it on to the agenda, but we learned just this evening that Chris Hugo, the longtime supervisor of cable and community television, recently lost his mom. Chris has been a great supporter of the Auburn Public Schools for many years, and we send our sympathies to him and his family. Chris's mom, Louise C. Hugo, a longtime resident of Holden, passed away Thursday, May 26, 2022, at the Oasis at Dodge Park in Worcester with her children by her side. She was 91 years old.
Sorry to hear that. We'll pray for Chris and his family. I'm seeking the approval for the minutes of 4:14:22, 4:27:22, 5:33:22, 5:18:22, and executive session minutes 5:18:22. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 14th, April 27th, May 3rd, May 18th, and executive session minutes of May 18, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's a vote. Do we have a student representatives' report today? Is Ally?
Is she there? Yep.
Hi, Ally.
Hi, Ally.
Hi. So, I don't have too much to report on, but last Friday, the seniors did have their last day of school, so unfortunately Jasmine's no longer with us. Patricia's having a great time because the seniors have all of their end-of-school activities this week, so last night, they all went to the Blue Sox game. Today, they had a field day just at high school, and I believe that they're going to a ropes course, and they're doing an overnight event. So, lots of exciting things for them, and next week, they'll have all their graduation rehearsals leading up to the graduation on June 10th. As for the rest of us, juniors have a spree day that we're having at Lemansky Park next Thursday, June 9th, and I believe the sophomores recently had a field trip to Level 99, and the freshmen will have a field trip to Candyland Park coming up. So, a lot of fun end-of-school events. Recently, Mr. Khan started an ultimate frisbee club. So, each Thursday afternoon, there's just a pickup game going on if there's students interested in playing ultimate frisbee. And I'm a member of Moll UN, and we were invited to a conference at Brown University. So, it'll be in the upcoming fall, so that's a very exciting event. That's an honor to be in. And on June 14th, there'll be a school day games for unified students, and that's about all I have for right now.
Wow, it's a lot going on.
What?
Very exciting. Are you doing ultimate frisbee club?
Not in the upcoming weeks. They just had their first one last Thursday.
Oh, okay. Anyone from the committee have any comments or anything?
Through the chair, how's it feel to be the big man on campus now?
It's going to be weird without Jasmine, but next year, there'll be someone new.
Her face lit up when you asked it.
Do we have Ally for another meeting, Mr. Chair?
I think we do, one more.
Okay, one more.
I hope. Yep.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much for that report.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Yeah, have fun in these last couple of weeks of school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ally.
Great, thank you.
Good night.
You too. Thanks. She's awesome. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, as we've been doing in recent meetings, we begin with a spotlight on our students. This week, this meeting will took our spotlight is on some first-grade students from Packard Chog School. They completed a community service learning project, sharing thank-you cards and donations with local veterans in honor of Memorial Day. I'm going to let Mrs. Stanek introduce her students as they come up to the podium.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us this evening. I have some of my fabulous first graders with me this evening, and they're going to share a little bit about their community service learning project to support our local veterans. I have Jillian Benoit from Mrs. Cherie's class, Ava Salo from Mrs. Jermaine's class, Chloe Corey from Miss Williams' class, and Colin Murphy from Mrs. Clancy's class. All right, so Jillian?
This year, the first graders collected items and made cards for the veterans. In school, we made cards and wrote letters to give to local veterans.
We shared our cards at our Memorial Day program with local veterans.
We will be donating items to the Veterans Shelter in Worcester.
And now, the children would like to share their Memorial Day poem with all of you. "When you see a soldier..."
When you see a soldier who protects us every day, stop and tell him thank you before you walk away. When you see a veteran with sad and tired eyes, stop and tell him thank you for their noble sacrifice. When you see a little flag beyond the cemetery wall, send a sign with thank you because they gave their all.
Wow. Thank you, Ken, for having us this evening.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Good job, guys.
Good job.
All of you. It's hard getting up there, trust me. Like, it takes some bravery to do this, so you guys did a great job, and thank you to your awesome caregivers as well. Obviously, you come from great families, and that was awesome. So, does the committee have anything to say?
Well, just thank you so much. My husband's a veteran, and he loves it when people say thank you to him. So, thank you again.
Through the chair, you guys did an awesome job. Good job.
I heard you just had a concert, too, last week. I heard it was wonderful. Good job. Lots of fun things.
I saw a few videos online, basically.
We'll say through the chair, I was able to attend their Memorial Day song, poems, and the crowd was great, the kids sounded awesome, and I always like to say they made us proud. So, they made us proud tonight, and they made us proud then. We appreciate their families for bringing them and for Mrs. Stanek for coming as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. You guys can go. You guys are welcome to go. You can stay and help me.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, Colin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Mrs. Stanek for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi.
Hi. Which one are you connected to?
Julie.
Oh, okay.
That'd be awesome. Great job.
Yeah. Hi. Thanks for coming. It's going to be lonely without you.
I know. I'm very unpopular now. I was sick of it.
I always invite them to stay after, but they haven't stayed yet.
They'd all be sleeping by the end of the year.
That's a story.
Oh, man, that spotlight on students is like the highlight of the meetings. It really is such a great addition to...
That's what we're all about, huh?
Yeah, totally.
Absolutely.
Seeing it in action, so definitely. All righty.
All right. So, next we move on to COVID-19. I didn't put in any numbers. I think we are trending down a little bit each day, which is good. That news had come out through the state as well. We did get a late information from Desi this week about the testing program. So, testing will continue through this school year, but it, there'll be no testers anymore starting this summer. So, right now, we have testers in our buildings that have helped. That amount of support has diminished over the last few months and will continue to do so as the summer approaches. And then, next school year, they've advised us that they will not be continuing the testing program into next school year. We do have eligibility to purchase test kits through a state contract. We haven't gotten information about ordering that yet. In the meantime, we have a number of the remaining Binax Now tests that the testers have been using. Whatever is left of those, as long as we still have good expiration dates on them, can continue to be used perhaps through summer school and even into the start of next school year. We also have a supply of the at-home test kits for people who either didn't retrieve them, the kids didn't pick them up, the teachers didn't take them, whatever that might be. So, that will be another resource for us going into next school year. I'm going to have another invent -- we have a pretty good inventory right now. I just want to double-check expiration dates, see where that leaves us, and then perhaps we can have a conversation if we choose to move forward with the purchase of additional ones to start next school year. It's just so hard, right? There's no crystal ball to tell us where we're going to be come September, so it's a hard call to make. But, yeah, so that program will be going away.
Okay. Wow.
Hopefully, it'll stay away because we'll stay healthy.
Right, exactly.
I was just gonna, can I ask?
Yes, of course.
If there happens in the fall, we do get a slight, could the test be brought back?
So, I think we can choose to buy the tests ourselves and administer them ourselves. So, that's going to be a process through the state contract. I have no idea what they're talking about for pricing. So, we can do that. What I'm kind of hoping is that we have a good supply of what we have to start and see where we're at before we go and make an investment in additional tests that, will we need them? I don't know. What will the protocols be? What will the guidance be related to how kids can stay in school, when they can stay? All of that is a bit of a moving target, so.
Through the chair, may I ask a question as well?
Yes, of course, yeah.
Are we looking at continuing the zip slip?
Yeah, so that's a really, really good question, and I think that's one that I need to pose to our nursing staff, and I certainly welcome your input as well. I've had a lot of feedback from families that they're ready to see it go away, honestly, that daily slip. So, what I know is it's provided our nurses with some good information about student absences, but we wouldn't necessarily have to do it in the same way we're doing it if we kept it, right? We could use it for more of an attendance reporting kind of thing. So, instead of calling in if your child was sick, you could fill out the form, give some symptoms, and send it in. The nurses find families give a lot more information about a student absence when they do that versus a phone call. Yeah.
Through the chair, if I can say, I completely understand because when I have to call my daughter in, I do both. I do the zip slip, and I call in, and I give more information through the zip slip than I do through the voicemail. Yeah.
Yeah, and they really, they have found that helpful. Not so much related, I mean, certainly related to COVID, but for other reasons, too, right? Something happened at home with a child, the parent reports it, they put it in writing. Now, the nurse knows to follow up on whatever the issue was the next day, so we'll see. But I think there's, there are a lot of people I think that would be really happy if they didn't have to do that every day, and I don't want to make somebody do it just to do it. And even now, you know, like today, we had four reported cases, our absences were good. It's, I don't have a great answer right now because I'm one to like wait and kind of see what happens, but...
Exactly, yeah. Through the chair, like, I think that it's a good platform. I think that it's nice to have that available, especially with like the busing and the forms for like satellite, Galaxy, things like that. So, I think it's still a good platform. I understand parents' concerns about the everyday thing, but it has given us invaluable knowledge.
Invaluable. It has helped us so much through this.
So, I agree, we have to kind of wait and see.
Yep. I mean, I don't find it, I, it's become such a habit to me. I don't even think about it anymore, and with the app, it takes, you know, less than 10 seconds to do it. But I get it, you know? If you have three kids and you're trying to get to work and you're running out of the house, it's another thing, you know? So, I understand that point of view, too.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's a silver lining to see it go away, for sure, but I would want to definitely hear from our faculty as well, like their thoughts and feelings. I'm getting rid of it. Well, that helps me make my decision, my personal decision. That's good to know. That's great. So, okay, good, yeah. So, and we don't need your daily updates either, do we, anymore? That should give you a little break.
Yeah, so I am thinking that those, at this point, I'm going to ride it out to the end of the school year. I've had a couple of people ask me that question, like, when are these going to end?
Yeah.
Even though I have found that, it's been a good platform for lots of other stuff, right? People kind of expect they're going to get this update around 5 o'clock. Last night, I almost forgot. But I don't know. You know, I think the end of the year, and then we'll see, but I think it's been, I think giving people information in smaller bites, I think, is better than sometimes we try and compile everything and put it all in one big push, and then they don't have the time to look at it.
Right, yeah.
If it's a one-subject, topic kind of thing, I think people are taking it in a little bit better. I mean, I get a lot of feedback, a lot of questions, like, we want people to ask questions about things, you know? Whereas, when you put out that big notice once a week or once every couple of weeks, I don't think you get as much because I don't think as many people read it. So, there's a lot, something to think about in there.
Love the daily. I do. I know it's a lot of work for you, and I appreciate, and I appreciate it, but I love, like, just being aware of what's going on.
Yeah, and it really is, it's easier for me. It's just a habit, right? Rather than trying to keep track of everything, but that's another thing. We'll see how that goes.
Yeah. I'll leave it up to you, I guess, on that one, because it is more work. All right, moving on to unfinished business.
Yeah, so there is a little blurb in there with school safety.
I'm looking at the old agenda. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry. I did have this in because given, given the events of last week in Texas, I promise you that, you know, I want people to know that safety has been and always will be the priority of the Auburn Public Schools. You know, as a principal, and I know some of the other principals, when you ask a student, you know, what's the job of the principal? It's about keeping kids safe, and that goes throughout the district. But I know that at this point, and I've received many emails from folks and calls with concerns about what, what are we doing? Do we need to do more? And so, just to give everybody a little bit of an overview of some of the things that are in place, because this has been a priority for quite a long time, going back to the very, I think, beginning of Dr. Brunel's tenure, when she began, was back when we began with multi-hazard plans, which are written each year for each school building. And the multi-hazard plans are done and are reviewed by the Police Department and the Fire Department, and they cover a wide range of things. They cover fire safety, they cover bomb threats, evacuation sites, they have information about special needs children, so should someone need particular, very specific assistance if they were to have to evacuate. Those multi-hazard plans, I will tell you, are kept confidential within the, within the Fire Department, Police Department, and the School Department because that's another layer of safety. We don't necessarily need anyone else to know where our unification sites are in certain instances. We don't need everyone to know where our students might travel to should they need to leave a building. So, there is some, you know, some things we can't share about that, but that's only done for the safety of kids, and those have served us very well for a long time. They cover a lot of information. Alice training has been in the schools since about 2017, I think. All of our staff have been trained in Alice and what to, how to evacuate if there were an intruder in the building, whether it's evacuate, blockade, you know, fight back, all of those things. We need a refresher, and we get those at the beginning of each year, and, you know, this was really precipitated by the district safety team, which continues to exist and will exist. It was funny, about two weeks ago, I said to Mr. Fahy, I'm going to pull everybody together again, go back and review what's in place, and students at the middle school and the high school get a modified active shooter drill. So, I know that, I'm not sure what year it was, but we have an active shooter drill for staff in each of the school buildings, just for staff. Everyone knew it was coming. Everyone knew what it was going to be like. There were no secrets about it because we didn't want anyone to be frightened. And they came into each building, there were blanks that were fired in the school. I was with Brian Kennedy in Bryn Mawr, and he said, "You're going to stay with me so you can observe what's happening," right? People leaving, running out of the buildings, doors closing. And I will tell you that I had teachers that ran through the woods, petrified, even knowing. They knew what time it was happening. They knew everything. There was nothing that was a surprise, and I walked out of the building with tears streaming down my face because the, the sound and hearing that in a school building was terrifying. So, we, and that doesn't mean we don't need to do it. So, it's not why I share that, but we made a very conscious decision then that to put our kids through that, like an active shooter drill, and some places do it. But the decision with the safety team at the time and people involved in the community was that we could do other things that, because there's a lot of studies out there, that that can be as traumatizing as going through the actual event. So, our middle school and high school students, they go through the practice of, you know, they're told, there's someone in the building, they have to get to class, they block the door, they're hearing announcements, and their goal is to blockade the door, to keep someone from entering. And then, the police go around and try and open the doors, and then they debrief with the kids, and they talk about it. But they don't do it in a way that's, they try to not make it scary, but serious, right? And our older kids, our middle school and high school kids are, to some degree, I would say maybe not all, prepared to do that. Our elementary school kids are not. And so, we talk to them more about when there's a fire drill, right? That sometimes there could be an emergency, and you need to know that you're going to listen to me, right? You're going to listen to your teacher, whether, whatever she tells you to do as quickly as you can. And you, you know, I've seen many fire drills in my day, and I will tell you, kids get up and get out. They get up and they get out. So, you know, we're going to continue with that, but again, all of these things are going to be revisited by our safety team to see if there's more that we can do. You know, I know we went through in our interior buildings, you know, the high school and the middle school are fairly new, right? All of those doors were built to lock, all the, you know, the classroom doors. Mr. Fahy went through in Packard Chog, Swanson, and Bryn Mawr. We all had mechanisms on our doors replaced because we had the old-school doorknobs with the little sliding locks, right? So, that was all changed to upgrade the doors to the degree that we could. You know, we now have key card entry, picture IDs, and in the other buildings, middle school and high school, those doors lock pretty much automatically. They're mostly, most doors are closed and locked all day, every day. Outside of our building, you know, we talked to our staff about when you're out at recess, you need to be alert not only for things on the ground, as we know something was found recently at Auburn High School, right? But who's driving by? Is there someone standing at the fence? And they always have walkie-talkies outside. So, whenever they're out, even for a PE class, they're going out with a walkie-talkie, which all of our walkie-talkies can reach the Police Department and the Fire Department with the flip of a switch. So, you don't need a cell phone out there, too. You can reach them directly, and they'll be there quickly. I will say, one time at Bryn Mawr, I had someone out at recess. They said, "There's a dark car going slowly through the front parking lot." So, I went flying out the front door. The car hadn't even left the parking lot yet, and it was Chief Slukas. And said, "I cannot believe it." You know, I was right, I had the custodian behind me, and we were going after the car, so it's not unusual in our schools. People call you every minute to go there. You know? I got them. Yeah, I got them. Somebody at Pack was walking a dog the other day, and as soon as they heard it, there were people out there. So, they're very alert about what's going on around the schools. And I will tell you, in the short time I've been in this role, the number of times I've spoken with the Police Department and the Fire Department about incidences, perhaps, you know, some things that happen outside schools that the Police Department is sharing with us, and likewise, things that happen in our schools that we think, in some cases, the Police Department needs to know, they have been unbelievable, as has the Fire Department. So, those connections mean a lot. And I think what we, as a leadership team and principals, have been talking about is, you know, what can we do? Well, what we can do is make sure that we know our kids, right? Because when you see these things happen, it's the kid who is disconnected. Nobody really knew him, flew under the radar, wasn't involved, didn't have those personal connections. And so, we talk a lot about that, and we've been talking about that for several months, that we have to know every one of our kids. And beyond that, we may be looking for some training around, what are some other signs we can be looking for for kids that, you know, maybe aren't as obvious as being disconnected, right? And so, I think that's something that I want to bring to the team to talk about, but the more we know our kids, the more kids feel like there's somebody in that building that cares about them, the less likelihood there is for any of this to happen. So, the district safety team will continue. We have school-based safety teams that are attached to that, and through this process, to continue to look for ways to improve because we always can, right? We always can. So, those discussions will be ongoing. You know, Mr. Fahy will be returning. He's been out for a couple of days, and he'll be returning tomorrow, and there's, there's a lot, there's always a lot we can do, but this team, when this, all these protocols were put in place and looked at, they serve us well, and they continue to serve us well. And I think, you know, there's never a guarantee, but I think what we have in place is really strong and really powerful and always open to suggestions, you know? So, we're going to continue to work on that, but I feel confident that our kids are safe in our schools. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I just have a comment. One of the things I've heard over and over again about some of the people that have terrorized schools or other places is they've abused animals. And as an animal lover, I always tune into that, but that's an early sign that they're trying to be superior over something, so they start over the little animals, and then they graduate to humans. So, sometimes kids come to school and talk about that. So, that, that's something that could be picked up on and maybe talk to guidance or...
Yeah, they do, and we take that very seriously. I will tell you, in my time here, I've not heard that very often, but, but that is very true. That is a very troubling sign of, of mental health and challenges with a child when they say that, for sure.
Anybody else? Through the chair, yes. My, you know, from the teacher perspective, like, just making sure that teachers are retrained in Alice. I know that I've been trained once, and like, they offer it to new teachers every year, but I think it's important that every teacher gets like a full refresher, just to like bring it. I mean, I'm telling you, since the Texas, since I've had like nightmares, and it always revolves around my, like, my, my school, my building. And so, it's like one of those things where I wake up and I'm like, okay, that wasn't And so it's like one of those things where I wake up and I'm like, okay, that wasn't real, but like I know that I would like to be retrained in Alice. I think that if we, you know, put it out to the staff and say, like, we're gonna just retrain just to get it. And it is, it's very, it's a very traumatizing experience. I mean, I I remember leaving my first, like Alice training and it just, you for like days. It's it's very traumatizing for staff, so you know, I like knowing that my younger children in elementary aren't going through it, but I I feel like they are very safe at PAC and Swiss. Um, but knowing that like the middle schoolers and the high schoolers are getting some form of like, let's teach you how to barricade, let's teach you how to you know, keep your classroom safe, uh, without stressing you out too much. But it's, you know, the kids are very aware, but I think that for teachers and staff, like just to get that training again. You know, and say, we're gonna just do it again, we're gonna practice again, you've all been through it. And then this way everyone gets that recert, you know, that we know that we're we're up to date.
We only have that one full day before school begins. So we're really trying to prioritize what we put on that day while also giving the teachers some time just to kind of get ready for the year. Um, but Alice was definitely going to be one of them and you'll see later on this evening, I've been working on a staff handbook. Um, kind of an interactive staff handbook and within that, because what happens for the staff that come on, let's say in November. Right? When you have something at that beginning of the year, they can kind of miss things. So we've tapped on a modified Alice review that somebody could understand on their own with then a connection to a person on the building-based safety team who can further review that information with them. So we really, we know that this is, you know, and and I'm gonna say, I don't wanna use it as an excuse. Um, but COVID blew so many good practices out of the water, it it really did. Um, and we've got some, we've got to do a reset here for sure. I agree.
Through the chair, I just have to say, and I said it the day after, I still feel so comfortable dropping my kids off. My only concern was what they were gonna hear and they didn't, you know, even the police officers that were at the schools were high fiving the kids. And they made it normal, so, um, just thank you for everything, cuz I've I've never not felt. Nothing's a hundred percent, but I can't think of a safer place to send my kids every day, so.
And you bring up a great point, um, Brian Kennedy reached out and he said, there'll be police presence at schools through the end of the school year. You know, that's, they have a lot to do and for them to take the time to do that, it it really means a lot, it means a lot. They've just, I can't say enough about the support I've gotten from them, so it's in the in the district, it's just great, so.
Yeah, Dr. Chamberlain, I was just gonna say that same thing, the relationship that you have and we have and the support from them is just phenomenal. Even the fire department, they're always there if we need them. It's really reassuring to know and just like Meg said, I feel very confident sending my kid to the middle school. You know, and our kids, in the animal thing you mentioned, like our kids in these schools are sharing information, they are hearing things and they're sharing things. And our system is working because we have thwarted a lot of issues already that a lot of people don't know because kids have confidentiality rights. So like, it's very clear on the inside, you can see the system working, the staff is using the system, they are successful. The kids are sharing information, like if we encourage them to continue to, if they see something or hear something, say something. You know, a lot of stuff is through kids talking to one another. So that's just really important, I think especially the start of next year, we really reinforce all of those, those things, so. Um, thank you for that report, it's very reassuring, I know a lot of people in the community are nervous. And just like, you know, when Sandy Hook happened, it just opens your eyes all over again to the vulnerability of our kids and teachers and the schools and, you know, these people are heroes, like they're the unsung heroes, so. Yeah, just thank you, thank you very much for that.
One, one more thing, sorry. I know that I'll speak for the staff in every school building, like we will protect your children, like they're our own.
Oh, absolutely.
Like, uh, and and I know that the Auburn staff is like that and I know, like I'm like that, like we will step, like step in front of anything to make sure those kids are safe, so. You know, we, like, we we want that training, we want that, you know, just to make sure that the children are safe. That's all we care about every day when they walk in, we want them to be safe, we want them to be happy, we want them to, every day, like know that this is a safe place for them, so.
Yeah, that's great.
And that's why they feel comfortable to coming and talking to us, because we're not gonna judge, we're not gonna, you know.
You don't hear about the teachers, you know, they're they're not outside hiding behind trees when this stuff happens. Like they are right there, hands on, helping and keeping the kids safe, so. Yeah, it's, it's a very sad reality, but I'm very thankful for the protocols we have in place and our, you know, our police department as well, so.
So we move on to unfinished business. I did, um, the CLEF full equity report, right? I chaired the last time, giving you some time to review, uh, the report. And just for a little context, if, um, I look back at the, uh, the executive summary that was part of that. The reason we did this was because, you know, sometimes you can't see where your blind spots are, right? And so, uh, we felt that this was important for us to look carefully, using someone who is impartial to really help us walk through our data, so this audit wasn't done to us, it was done with us. And with a group of stakeholders. And you know, our essential question to this was what factors should the Auburn Public Schools consider in creating a roadmap for strategic implementation of equitable academic and cultural practices that will improve inclusivity, safety, accessibility and rigor for each and every student? When we think about those words, inclusivity, safety, accessibility and rigor, that's not new, right? That's not new to the Auburn Public Schools, that's in our strategic plan. That's what we talk about when we talk about our, you know, the our unified programming that we provide and all of that. But we always, we knew that we could do better, and so that was the impetus for having, um, Clue come in and kind of walk us through this. So since we last met, I have shared this out, it is on our website. I have shared it out, um, you know, the link out via a one, uh, one of my evening messages. Um, I have offered to folks, the 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 way I see this helping us is that this is what's gotta be embedded or part be part of our strategic plan for the district. In a clear way, that we are looking at, are we meeting the needs of all kids? And when I say all, I mean all, I mean our struggling learners, I mean our LGBTQ kids. I mean our kids who are high flyers and off the charts as far as academic goes. I, the the sports folks, the all of those things, this is about all kids. All kids are gonna benefit when we build this into our strategic plan. So we've started to hear from some people, I'm trying to tease out some dates and times that we can begin the conversation. Um, but I'm open tonight if any of you have any questions, cuz I know since we last met, you know, you really hadn't had a chance to review it. But I'm certainly happy to talk about this, I I have addressed several questions from the community that have come forward. This really is just about making sure that we are maximizing the resources we have to ensure that every single student gets the best experience he or she can have.
All right, open it up, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a quick comment through Chair Fennec, I think it's absolutely fantastic, I read it over and I just think it's fantastic that they, that we have this done and that Auburn is open to making sure we are there for all children in the system. So I think it's wonderful that it was done.
Through the chair, I I also read through it, um, and I really liked the part for the teachers where it had them like fill out like a form on how to look at like what they're reading with the kids and what they're doing with the kids, I thought that was like amazing. Because it asks you like, who are you targeting and who are you aiming to reach this and it's really just looking at just making us more culturally responsive. And regardless of our population here, our children need to understand that there are many other people out in the world. So I I really enjoyed it, I think that I think that it, there was never, there's nothing in the report that is like, oh my god, like, ah. You know, that that report is just very informative and it was never, there was never attacking Auburn in any way. It was very open, like this is where there's deficits, like there's definitely deficits with females and science and math that we need to work on. But there's nothing that's saying like, oh, we are really doing a disservice to our students, we are not. And and I think just the CLEF report is showing that we are doing huge services to our students, we're really trying, we're trying to make an effort. And I I actually like, I took that little piece out, I'm like, oh, I'm gonna use this next time I do like an activity and see how it works. And and I really liked it, I thought it was really informative and I think it's a great, a great thing and I think all districts should do it, so.
It's a next step, yeah, and it's a logical step for Auburn, it's the next step we need to take, right? And we need to always be looking for what those next steps are, because that's how we we get into that whole idea of continuous improvement. Which again, I go back to Dr. Brunel, cuz she talked about that all the time. There's always room for improvement and that's what this is, and when we put kids at the heart of what we do, we have to be thinking that way, kids change, times change, knowledge changes, resource changes, all of those things change, we have to respond to that, so. I read it through again, um, in preparation for tonight, I've read it several times. But it was just, I I I don't know, I I'm, I just couldn't be happier that we did it, honestly, you know? And I will say, when we went through our tiered focus monitoring review with the Department of Ed, they had lots of questions about this. But questions like to share with others? Well, who's in, they, you know, they were so happy that we had kids involved and we had teachers involved and there were parents involved and um, what data did we look at? And when I shared all the data, they were just very impressed, um, that we had taken this on, so. We have a lot to be proud of again.
Yeah, I agree with you, Dr. Chamberlain, you and I had the pleasure of experiencing from start to finish and then reading the end result. And through the process, it was hard, you know, it was very hard, like working together, trying to weed through the data and figure out, you know, where we fall short and where we excel. You know, the final report was long and tedious and at times I was like, oh my god. But it was very informative. A couple takeaways though that I did have from our MCAS two thousand nineteen, and this is why this is so beneficial. Um, our non-disabled students scored a lot higher than our disabled students. You know, that's something that we should be aware of and we can, you know, make small changes, fix. White students scored higher than our Hispanic and Latino population, so that is a group that we need to focus on. Non-economically disadvantaged kids scored a lot higher than disadvantaged, than disadvantaged kids. So again, like, it's going to hone in our focus to help those ones that are struggling, that really just, like you said, fly under the radar, you know? You don't really notice. And like you mentioned, Sam, the male, the males were scoring. They were me- meeting their benchmarks, seventy percent, and the females were forty-nine percent, which is a huge.
Huge gap.
Huge gap. You know, and the the biggest takeaway was that no one is doing a bad job, none of the faculty, they're all doing their jobs wonderfully, um, but I do think like this knowledge is power and I think it will make us better in the long run, um, I'm excited for the updated strategic plan to, you know, that's really gonna implement a lot of this stuff. Um, I did have a question, they mentioned a lot about the vocal survey.
Yes.
So do you have information to share on that or is that something?
Yeah, so that data is a little bit old now, I I wanna say it's maybe from twenty eighteen. Um, but that's done every several years by the Department of Ed, they send out a survey, so. Um, I do have the results, I'll tell you, they're not pretty results, you get like a, it's like a spreadsheet. So it's not like they give you some nice gra- you you have to kind of tease it all out yourself. Actually, I was glad to give it to them, that they could kind of tease through that, because it's not a great report that you get, it's just a spreadsheet with responses.
And that was from our students?
Yes.
Okay, so student responses. And we do that, would you say it once a year?
They do it every three years.
Every three years?
Yeah, Desi does that. I will tell you, I am working on some surveys, um, for staff and for families. Um, and then hoping maybe next year at the beginning of the year, we can do something around school culture with kids, even with our youngest kids. You never know what they're gonna say.
Right, and it does, you know, knowledge is power and, you know, I just think the more information, the more data, the better, off we will be, so.
Through the chair, how is this, um, gonna be reported to staff, is this gonna be brought up at like a faculty meeting or?
Yeah, so I'm really, as I read through it again, you know, much gets teased out into that executive summary, that's the first few pages. What they advise to do is to take some time to have everybody go through the data like we did as part of the committee. I I'm trying to find a shorter route for some of that, right? Our time is so tight. Like even trying to figure out how to get people together at this time of the year to look at the strategic plan is is pushing my limits. And I may actually decide to do some of it virtually with the hope that we may get more people, you know, to participate, even if they can come in for an hour. So yes, so what I'm hoping is that we're gonna have some staff that are on the committee that begin to dig into it to look at the strategic plan that then they can disseminate to the staff, right? That they can after kind of wrestling with it a little bit. I'd really like to just go through that executive summary and talk about it, cuz I like to talk about it, I like to hear, well, what did you think about that recommendation? What did you think about that? How does that translate for what we do every day? I think that kind of, um, back and forth for me is a good way to process a lot of information, you know? So I'm hoping that's the first part of the strategic plan thing is that we just talk about it, what does it make you wonder? What does it make you think about? What does it make you worry about? What do you, you know, what what might you do in response to that? Um, and take that route, but yeah, I'm thinking from this plan, as long as I can get some teachers involved, that they would be the best ones to bring it back to their buildings.
I think that honest feedback goes a lot further than someone filling out a survey or, you know, being told what to do or whatever, so. Yeah, all right, anything else from?
The next three, uh, is a second reading, so I didn't know if, um, any of you had any questions related to the bullying policy, the restraint policy or the staff conduct policy that had been shared with you previously. Again, the bullying policy has been up, uh, for review on the website, I've gotten a few folks that have shared some information. Mostly just positive, that they really liked the highlighted changes that were made. Um, and they appreciated that, and again, it what, they weren't, there were fewer changes than I thought there had to be, um, it wasn't that big of an update. Uh, likewise with the restraint policy, um, and the staff conduct policy, the only addition to that was really to highlight that staff are under the same requirements of the bullying policy as other kids are, right? So staff can also be considered as bullies and they need to be aware of that, and then that's part of their expected conduct, so. I don't know if anyone had any questions, through school committee policy, it goes to information, second read, and then what's the third one called? I guess it's action, cuz then you would vote to approve. So that's, it has to go through three, uh, consecutive meetings, so these will be back again for a vote at the next one.
It's like a reoccurring dream.
Really, I, I think it gives you time to digest a lot of information, gives, um, the community time if anyone has questions. So I don't know if anyone has any on any of, on, uh, any of those three things.
I, through the chair, I just had a question about the the Google form, is that on the website now or is that once we approve it?
Yeah, so it's not on the website.
And where, where, where do you, where do you guys foresee putting that?
Everywhere, truly, so.
Would it be under like a bullying heading, would it be?
So on the district page, probably under students and families, right? And then on each of the subsequent school pages, it would be under students and families again, so it'll be in a couple of places. We're also looking, um, there are some place, some schools that particularly with kids with one-to-one devices, so middle school and high school for us. Um, that you put a link right on their.
Yeah, that's great.
Right on their, uh, whatever, their homepage, so that it's available for them if they wanna fill it out and submit it.
That's great, that was my only question.
Hey, I, yeah, I looked it over as well, um, yeah, I I think it's thorough and informative and great and you know, they talk about retaliation, I know that's one of the biggest reasons why kids don't come forward. So just shining a light on that is, you know, would make a huge difference just to reassure these kids to know that they can come forward and it can be confidential, you know, and, um. So, and I did notice that Desi does a survey on it, on the bullying climate in our schools. Is that once every, they said, it said it once every four years and then we would do a yearly survey on our own school climate.
Yeah, yeah, so I think part of that comes out of that vocal data, so maybe it's not three years, it's four years, right? The survey you asked about earlier, cuz that is a school climate survey. Um, and yes, we do need to do something, we used to have the Panorama survey, do you recall Panorama? That was pretty expensive, but that was something that all of our kids did on their teachers, all the teachers did on their principals. I used to really like it, others had mixed reviews. But some of that I think is training that has to, um, take place. Because people always say, well, you know, you always have your, and they say, it's hard for people to take negative feedback, right? But sometimes we have to hear that in order to get better, you know? Um, so I am looking at some options through Panorama that are free, that we can then use in the same manner.
Great, I'm sorry, through the chair, I, I remembered something that, um, on page twenty of the bullying. It for, and I see this is, I wonder if this is for like the younger grades, but it says, it says bully information. Should it say aggressor information? Because on another form it says aggressor and I'm just concerned that like.
Yeah, and actually probably, because I think Desi changed the wording.
Yeah, so I I saw that, it said bully, it said bully's name, bully's gender, bully's grade, I'm wondering if we should change that to aggressor? Just, um, yeah, that was the only thing I noticed is that when I was reading through it, I it says aggressor somewhere else, on the other page it says, please enter the full name of the aggressor. I just, I'm not sure we should be labeling that until, you know, it's a known fact.
And I think that's part of Desi's, um. And I think that's part of Desi's, the definitions, honestly, so that's good. I had a few typos too, so if you find any of those, it drives me crazy, but.
Well, that and the Clee report, by the time I got to the end of the bullying thing, I couldn't even see the names. It all was good to me.
I was doing it, I was reading during testing and I'm like, oh my god. And yeah, those school climate surveys, could we see kind of like a synopsis of what goes on, you know?
Oh, sure.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious to see, you know, from the kid's point of view, how they feel we're addressing bullying and, so, all right. All right, anything else? Good.
What's on the screen? Yeah, my, I got timed out of Zoom, but we didn't have anyone there anyway. We're still live as far as cable goes, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know why I timed out, because we're paying for it, so we'll have to look into that tomorrow.
Just one more thing.
One more. You also have second reading. So the staff handbook, the last time I had presented it to you, it was really just the table of contents in the first few pages. This time I gave you more of the information that's included. And I share this with, with you really primarily for information, not necessarily for approval, because I see this document as a yearly work in progress. What I would like to highlight that's been added, if you look at just on the second page with the superintendent's welcome message after the table of contents. So this is where, as I said earlier, there'll be an Alice introductory information link that staff will have to, I have a, a Google doc, a form that they'll have to fill out to say that they've actually done these. They've verified that they agree that they have gone through this information. But what I also added here at the bottom is you'll see enough, which is a training course developed to meet the specific needs of schools related to preventing child sexual abuse and educator sexual misconduct. So this was a training that we had done back in 2018, again, all staff-related, watching for the signs of abuse in schools. And so I feel like that's an important training that everyone needs to do every year. So added it in here for any new employee that comes in. But that will be something that probably won't happen on the first day of school, but throughout the use of our faculty meeting time at the start of the year, everyone will participate in that. We do have to pay for it, but it seems like it's money well spent.
Definitely, yes, absolutely.
So yeah, so just really more for information, but we will, you know, a lot of information about technology and how you get accounts and all that kind of thing. So the district calendar, a number of forms that new staff would need. But we hope to, each school will be able to add their own sections, specific to their school. How do you get supplies? Who do you talk to for those kind of things, you know, that are building-based? But we hope that then it'll be a resource for everyone as they come in, so. And it's all technology-based, so it's all links to different things.
That's great, yeah, not everyone has Facebook. And so, you know, a lot of people, that's their go-to for information on updated supply lists and stuff. So to have it somewhere else is a great thing. Okay, any questions or comments concerning the updates? Okay, moving on to new business.
Business, announcement of our retirees. Some of this has been shared with you previously, but the following employees will all be starting their retirement this summer and have a combined two-hundred-and-three years of service to the Auburn Public Schools. Eileen Donahue, Auburn High School Assistant Principal with thirty-two years. Kate Flynn, Secretary to the Director of Pupil Services. Donna Gates, she's a Bryn Mawr and Swanson Road Special Educator. Karen Graves, the Auburn Middle School Adjustment Counselor is leaving us. Cecilia Lufstedt, the Assistant to the Director of Food Services. Tina McNamara is a Bryn Mawr Instructional Assistant and a new grandmother. Rosemary Reedy, Director of Pupil Services, will be leaving us. Anne Shane, Swanson Road Physical Education Teacher. And Anne Williams, Paketog Special Educator. So some longstanding folks that have been with us for many, many years and we wish them well as they move on to the next phase of their life and the next adventure.
Definitely, two-hundred-and-three years, that has you beat, Gail.
Just Gail.
I don't know, I've topped my forty-one.
Yeah, that's true, true.
Challenge accepted.
I only signed up for this, I mean.
You can't get enough. Those long tenures, though, that just is a true testament how great it is to work in Auburn.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's awesome. Definitely wish them well and thank you for their service.
Yeah, and may they have as much fun as I've had.
That's great.
Okay.
And then on to that, the letters to the retirees are available. As has been done, they've been prepared for all of the school committee to sign to offer appreciation for their dedicated service to the students of Auburn. And again, nine staff members have given two-hundred-and-three years of service. So there's a motion to that, yeah, Madam Chair.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the letters to retirees and have them distributed.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here's a vote.
Thank you. The next item is a long time coming. We've had a very antiquated fee schedule and process for using our buildings, our facilities and our fields. And this came about through discussions with Mrs. Worsbicky, Mrs. Cheryl Moran, who works in our Accounts Payable Department, and certainly Mr. Fahy. As far as it, it, we just had a process that it took forever to get through. It was difficult to track who was using what. And then to have the process of having folks pay for what they should pay for needed to really be reined in. So I share with you, the first item in your packet is the fee rate. It's, it's the rental rates and group classifications. It's toward the middle part of your packet. What I wanted to point out, and I should have highlighted this for you, is the paper and the way this is being presented has changed. But very few of the fees were actually changed. We only changed, and this was based on Mr. Fahy's recommendations, a few of the fees that should have been changed. So for instance, we used to charge twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour for someone to use a classroom in our building if they were a group B, so non-for-profit, right? We're still not charging our Auburn, our Auburn groups and, and we have no intention of doing that. But we raised the fee for using a classroom for some folks to either twelve dollars and fifty cents or twenty-five dollars an hour. We thought that that was a reasonable increase. Previously, our custodial services, folks paid twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents an hour. We realized over the years, the actual pay that our custodians make, that twenty-nine fifty in many cases was not covering what we had to pay our custodians. So that's why here it's now up to forty dollars where that, you know, that's an ample coverage for our custodial services. And then the only other change was to our site managers, which had been at fifty, fifteen dollars or thirty dollars, we made it twenty dollars or forty dollars. Because quite frankly, we have a hard time getting site managers to cover the buildings and thought a little bit of an increase there would help us to get folks to do that. So again, how this is laid out and how it looks is different than the old form, but those are the only actual fees that have been increased. Because Joe felt like what was there was still ample enough to cover the, any expenses that would be incurred. So there was no reason to raise that. So that's one piece. And all of this, we'll need to come back again for your approval. I'll give you time to look through all that. The, the form titled Facility Use Procedures, this is really an internal, an internal procedure form. So just wanted you to know that this is about making sure that when someone comes in and says, I'd like to use the all-purpose field at Auburn High School, what the channel of, what the steps have to happen, right? So the secretary says, okay, the, the field is open. It's not on this calendar that we're maintaining. This is what it would cost you based on the category that you fall into. I'll put this in there. Then they say, all right, you've got to go online. You have to fill out this Google form that we've now created, so we have record of that. Once that's done and we have a certificate of insurance, then the approval process starts with the building principal knowing what's going on. The athletic director, because he coordinates the site managers, he makes sure a site manager, that we have a site manager available. He said, well, what happens if we don't have a site manager? I said, well, then, given what the situation is, we can't have the event, right? Because we have to have someone there. We are moving towards some of our regular folks, like Auburn people that come in that we've typically had site managers for, but these are coaches that are longstanding in the community that, that we're putting together some training for them. They can serve as the site manager. So that it takes, it's, it gives a little bit of relief to our pool of site managers, yet we're encouraging and supporting our Auburn groups who we know and trust and have been in our buildings or on our fields before, that they know what the expectation is. So all of that's looking to be tweaked so that, the other thing is, is people would fill out the form and it might take a week and a half to get to me to approve. Might take even longer. If someone was out for a couple of days, it got stalled in Brian Davis's office, then the principal was out. This all makes it much more immediate when they put it into this Google form, that everybody now that needs to have access to this sheet can see who's, who's putting that in. So I think it's going to streamline the process and it's also going to better track who's using it? How long did they use it? Did they use it responsibly? Did we get paid for it? Cheryl will be able to look and see, okay, we told this person, they owe us twelve hundred dollars. You know, an invoice will be generated, she'll track and make sure we get the money, and it's all in one place. So that we really feel we can, because I will tell, well, you all know, right? You've been by the high school some Saturdays. Every field is in use, there's something going on in the gym, there's a craft fair in the hallway. It's a lot to keep track of and to make sure that things are done responsibly. So we really think that all of this is going to help us a lot. So does this happen at central office, where they have to start the process? Nope, they have to start the process at the building that they want to use. Oh, I see. And those folks, because they're the ones that are going to best know. They're going to monitor that, they have a separate calendar just for events in their building.
Okay.
Because then the custodians in that building have access to that. So they know they're going to need coverage for Saturday because there's basketball. And all of those things are going to fall into place a little bit more cleanly. The other piece that's, that we've had trouble with is people cancel.
Yeah.
So they cancel and the custodian shows up.
Right.
Because it never got that far down the chain for the custodian to know. But we all can set alerts, you can set an alert on a Google Sheet when there's something that change, changes. And so everybody can see, Joe can see, oh, look at, that got canceled. I better make sure that Eric at the high school knows, we don't need him there, you know? It's going to more centralize this. The actual money collection will still happen here through central office. But everything else is coordinated through a central site, so everybody knows what's going on more quickly. It was really a little, it was just, it was just time for a refresh.
Sure, absolutely. Please, through the chair, is there an option for the cafeteria with kitchen use? Because that's.
Yeah, so actually, we did take that off as well.
Okay.
It just gets a lot more complicated now with the requirements of the Board of Health and all of that. Now, it doesn't mean folks can't serve food, right? So we're going to have a dance, they're going to have pizza brought in, they're going to, you know, they have certain safety precautions for serving, but nothing's prepared there. We've just, our food service has done such a tremendous job with upgrading what we provide to our students. And that's involved a lot of equipment upgrades.
Yeah.
And so to have folks in our kitchens using them, we just felt like it just was not a good thing to offer now. If our foreign language department wants to offer, like, they used to do a buffet on the Teachers' Day. The teachers could pay five dollars and they brought in all this stuff and some of it was in the kitchen. That's going to be different. We're going to, like, internal kind of things, we'll handle that differently. But we really feel it's risky to have outside people coming in and using our kitchen facilities.
Especially with allergies and stuff.
Yeah.
What about, can, can anyone in the community become a site manager? Is that something like?
Pretty much, I mean, they have to pass a Cory check.
So maybe, maybe in a future communication, we could put that out there and say, looking for site managers and.
Yeah.
People can sign up.
Great idea.
Because then that way, like, I never even knew that was an option, like, you know?
Yeah, and it's just making, you know, obviously, Mr. Davis and at the high school, Mr. DeLongchamp, you know, there's a whole series, and Mr. Fahy, what the expectations are, right? Primarily, it's no shenanigans, right?
Yeah.
And then it's leaving the places you found it. So not leaving trash and all of those things. So those are the, the biggest things. But yeah, that's a great idea to put that out, because we do need people. We have some very that are tried and true, that are with us all the time, but we're so busy sometimes that they just can't.
Right.
Can't cover all of that.
Great for people that might want some extra money, you know? Do it for a few hours.
And then there's also a sheet on the regulations, which is a more formal document about expectation. So I can let you read through all that. Most of it is very completely expected, right? Take care of the place, don't hang up signs, don't do those kind of things. But again, you'll have time to read through that. And then I did print the Google form that folks fill out to apply for use of facilities.
Great.
You know, it seems like this should not be as complicated as it is, but I'm going to tell you, huh, Cecilia? We had more meetings talking about this and trying to figure out the best way to make it work, so.
There's just so many people involved in the process of doing it, that this is going to.
Yeah, that's going to be great. Yes, definitely. Technology is a wonderful thing. All right. What's up next?
All right. The Southern Wester County Third Quarter Report is in your packet. This is surely shared for informational purposes only. Some of their budget information is in there with a financial update as well as enrollment. Just a typical report that we provide each quarter. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that.
Seeing none?
Okay, I think I had mentioned this previously, so we do have, so Linda Laughlin was a longtime secretary for us. She recently retired. We brought on a, a person to fill Kate Flynn's shoes upon her leaving. And now we need to kind of go back and fill the position that was vacated by Linda. When I pulled the job description, it had information in there about transcription machines. So I thought maybe we should update it. Interesting. Yeah, right? So we went through it and, you know, certainly Mandy was involved as well, as well as Cecilia and I. But it was never really clear when Linda was here. She was going to kind of help the assistant superintendent, but then she was doing some busing and she was doing satellite. And it was never really teased out. And in thinking about this, we've designed this particular job description to be the support person for the assistant superintendent and the business manager. Cecilia doesn't have any of that support in her office. And we now have a part-time person that's been taking care of satellite and Galaxy through Robin Grady, through all of the COVID and all that. She kind of came on to help us out. She's done an amazing job. So feeling like this is a good time to have this person be more dedicated to, to those two offices, professional development, all of those things, when it comes down to the nuts and bolts of putting that together. So it is a little bit of a change. We've also changed this to a confidential secretary, which would be on his or her own contract here at central office. Linda came to us as a school secretary, so she was under the, under the secretary's bargaining agreement. So she would sometimes have, like, on a half PD day, she would have that day off, but we were all here working.
Yeah.
Right? So it, it didn't make sense anymore. That just happened to happen because she was a good person to transfer at the time. So she came in under that same contract. But now where we have the chance to change that, it's much better, I think, to have this person be like everybody else that works here at central office.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Okay, good, and no more papyrus and feather pens?
Can you imagine? It was, it was old.
I had to school with inkwells, it was lots of fun. Only at West Auburn, though.
So we do need a motion on that for you to approve that job description.
Yeah, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the revised confidential secretary job description.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 This is a vote.
Thank you. As we do each year at this time, in your packet, you have a list of handbook updates. And you'll see that you have a sheet from each of the schools. Most of the time, the changes that you find are pagination, the letter from the principal, those kind of things. And for the most part, that remains true. The two things, or a couple of things that you may see that may stand out, the middle school and the high school want to look closely at their disciplinary procedures. And they want to look at it through the lens of, much of it is antiquated as well. It's kind of been what it's always been. And we feel as though it's going to be important to build in some education around those pieces, right? So even if a student has to be suspended, let's say for vaping, that there should be a required educational component for this student that helps that student to know the dangers of vaping. If the student is, 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 is involved in an altercation, right? Does that require some work with a guidance counselor? Now, there may still be discipline. Does that require some work with a guidance counselor? Now, there may still be discipline associated with the altercation. But the discipline, we find, it doesn't fix the problem, right? Now, I shouldn't say that. For some kids, it'll change their behavior. But for a lot of kids now, the discipline doesn't change it. So if I get suspended for three days because I was vaping, you know, I always say, well, they're probably sitting at home watching TV and they're vaping. What we need to do is educate the student about why that's not a good thing, even if it's, even it's now in an in-school suspension. So we know they're not sitting at home and vaping. And we're trying to move their brains along, that continuum of making that determination of what's good and what isn't good. What are the behaviors that help me and what hurt me? And so there is going to be a piece of that as well. And then, the bullying, the restraint policy, student records, there's a whole section of every handbook that is the same, right? Because it's, those are district policies. What I'm going to do, once I hope, you know, we eventually get to approval on those policies, is put together one large addendum for each of the handbooks. So I say, put this whole section at the end of your handbook. Because what happened was, and this was part of our tiered focus monitoring, there were pieces left out in, you know, this one didn't have this piece and that one didn't have this piece, because when the secretary was compiling it, for whatever reason, it just didn't carry over. And so each year, they'll get a whole addendum section of all the policy pieces that have to be in each to make sure that every handbook is the same. So, that's another piece that has to go along with this. But I don't know if you have any questions about, there's nothing. I, I didn't see anything that, that stood out to me, you know, semester changes, that kind of thing. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Through the chair. Just, and this is an oversight on my part, because I thought I looked through everything. On the elementary school ones, I'm seeing a lot where it just says updates and edits. And I just am wondering what those are before I approve them, if that means anything different. I just don't want to approve it if there's something different. If that makes sense? So like, if you look at the high school and the middle school one, it's just, the form is a little bit different, so it gives a little bit more detail.
Yep.
And the elementary school ones, I'm just
Yeah, I think that's just Swanson, right?
Ah.
Yeah, it says under cell phones and smartwatches, updates and edits.
Student arrival dismissal update is needed on the, yeah, package. I mean, obviously, the principal's letter.
Yeah, student arrival and dismissal. So sometimes if, if those kind of things speak to traffic flow, that wouldn't be, you know, we're not making it, we don't have any planned time changes to arrival and dismissal. So that would be if they decided to use, you know, the side door instead of the front door for a certain group of kids to come in the building. Or, you know, we've had all the traffic changes at Bryn Mawr School with how cars enter and exit.
Yeah.
Those would be the kind of changes I think that would happen there.
Okay.
I can follow up if you'd like, related to the cell phone and the smartwatches. I'm going to say that those are going to not be allowed on students' persons at Swanson Road.
Yeah.
You know, much like, even at the middle school, right? They stay in their locker in the, in the back decks. And even now at the high school, they've moved to, and, and we, they used to do this and it kind of went away, but they have like, you know, the things you can put shoes in, like the little And so that's where their phones go. Because during class, if they're allowed to be on their phone, their chance of being engaged in the learning is, is much, much less.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen it. Yeah, so, because it's a dress code, cell phone, smartwatches.
Birthday invitations.
Birthday invitations and attendance, TARDIS dismissals.
Yeah, I think the birthday, I, I mean, I can get you more information on that if you'd like for the next, I don't want to, I don't want to presume. I didn't, I, I've spoken with them about any major changes, as I said, that whole idea about updating the disciplinary piece, I think is a big one.
Yeah.
But I can get more information on these.
No problem. And sorry, I missed that when I was looking through the packet.
No, I did too.
So the in-school disciplining and further education concerning like vaping and whatnot, that's for both the middle school and high school?
Yeah, what they want to do is, it probably won't be the same, but they want it to make sense. So, right, so the discipline isn't this at the middle school and completely different at the high school, to build that continuum that makes sense. So how, some things handled at the middle school might be done differently than the high school, but they want to build in that education piece. They want to have a similar severity kind of scale with, you know, what's really bad, what's not so bad kind of thing. So that kids begin to learn those practices early, right? Because then if it's consistent when they get to the high school, they should know what the expectations are, right?
I think it is starting at the middle school.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's to no fault of the faculty or Mr. Desto. It's just these, the kids and COVID and whatever else is working against them, so. But yeah, I think that's a great, great change.
And we are finding that punitive approach, you know, it, it kind of kicks the can down the street, right? So for those few days, the kid's out of the school and it's okay, and, but then they come back. But what did we do? You know, how did we help? How did we intervene? Even if it's, you know, for some conflict resolution. Our high school had a lot of training on restorative practices and restorative conversations, where kids are trained to kind of, or staff is trained to help facilitate conversations between kids who really can't get along. Or one that's, you know, in a bullying situation, one's being really mean, like, there are ways to do that that help everyone come out feeling better about what happened, having learned something, right? We need to teach them that, particularly with COVID. But our kids lost a couple of years of learning how to be kids. They are, they, they just did. You know, everybody's a couple of years behind, so it's even more important that we not just take that punitive route, because for some kids, it just keeps pushing them that way.
Yeah.
You know? And so, and I'm not saying there isn't a place for it, because there certainly is a place for discipline and in a punitive manner, but we have to couple that with something else.
Yeah, and I think this falls onto the caregivers too. You know, these people are still trying to work and they're still recovering from COVID. To have these kids just home, like you said, vaping and watching TV, does everyone a disservice. Yeah.
Through the chair, do we just still do in-school suspension? I remember when I was a kid, kids hated in-school suspension.
What they don't do.
Yes.
We do, and we've already moved closer to, you know, towards having some time where they're, you know, I hate to keep using vaping, but it's an easy topic to bring up, right? Where they are, you know, doing some research and reading some things. But there are some free programs you can bring in too, that kids can follow to kind of go through a vaping education plan. I mean, that's a good thing, you know? Coupled with a relationship with a caring adult.
Agreed. Good chair, I like that education piece. I think it's more restorative justice aspect, because then they understand like, oh, there's a chance. Like, if I do this, this can have a negative effect on my, on my body. Like, I'm a football player, but I'm a vape. And like, then you realize, like, why are you doing that? So I think that's really going to be great.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, part of it's the nature of the developing brain of an adolescent.
Right, yeah.
Which is, it can take in some things and other things it can't, right? But we sure do have to try.
Agreed.
So those, there is a motion for that, but if you'd like, we can hold off on all of them until the next one. I get the information from Swanson Road, which I'm happy to do.
Sure. Make a motion to table it. Sorry, motion to ta, to, motion to table the proposed updates to the student handbook for 2022, 2023, till next meeting.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, table till next time.
Okay, the next item, proposed dates for school committee meetings for next school year. So before you, is a list of the proposed meeting dates for 2022, 2023. As has been previous, previously, there has been a discussion around changing meeting times from 6:30 to 6:00 PM. I thought this was a good time to have that conversation again, either way with the, the will of the committee. You know, we can make that adjustment, but you know, it is my recommendation that these dates are good. We did take into consideration some information around conflicts that may be present. So, I put it to you for question.
What do we think on the timing?
Six o'clock would be great for me, but I'm just, you know, I don't have kids at home, so.
I'm flexible, whatever you guys prefer.
I'm with either time.
All right, yeah, earlier the better, I think, especially for our staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Hang around and wait.
Yeah.
Time.
Right. And that's right about when my husband has to feed the kids, so I'll be gone for that.
Great.
I'll be home for bedtime.
Oh, yeah, that's true. So we'll start that next
Start it next year, yeah.
Yeah, so we have followed this, so there is a date on here for June 29th, which at this point, we have one more actual meeting scheduled. So I, I don't know that that date is going to be needed. We followed, Mandy followed the plan of how this has been done previously. It's new for she and I, but how this is set up. But we will certainly, we'll decide that at the next meeting, if that's needed or not.
Okay.
I thought we'd keep it there.
That's fine. And all those dates look okay to everyone so far?
Yeah.
What's to say?
All right, I'll entertain a motion then to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed meeting dates for the 2022, 2023 school year with a 6:00 PM start.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a done deal.
At the request of the town, we're sharing information this evening from the Auburn Flag Redesign Committee. They are accepting entries for a new Town of Auburn flag design and all the details can be found on our town website. There's also a flyer in your packet that will be posted with all the material, but I easily found it on the town's website as well. So if there are folks out there interested in participating in a flag redesign, I think it's a great opportunity.
I think we will, like.
Well, we're going to have one. Do the high school kids know about this too?
I don't know, I'm actually just thinking that. I think I should put it out to everybody, because you never know.
Like the graphic arts and stuff?
Yeah.
You know?
I like that.
I remember there were a couple of businesses in town that sought out the graphics art and there was a girl who her logo won. And it's on Reef 20, so that's kind of a cool thing.
I will share as an aside, I'm very excited because I've emailed all of our art teachers, because I felt like I needed some kid art in my cla, in my office. So I just heard from one of them that it's on its way, so I'm excited. I'm kind of thinking every try, I'll be recycling some, you know, having new kids artwork sent in, so.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Great. I'll share my pile with you, that I have a Frank and Sydney will have some artwork for you, Dr. Chamberlain.
The whole room will be covered in art.
Okay, teaching and learning report.
Yeah, so quickly, sharing the class of 22, college and university acceptances, 109 acceptances. Which is quite remarkable, and if you look carefully, the range of location, of type of school is really remarkable, so.
Yeah.
Just another indication that our kids make us proud all the time.
Awesome, yeah. That is very impressive.
And they're brave enough to go explore outside their bubble, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Sure about any of you, but I definitely looked to see if my college was on here. It was not. I was like, oh, no.
I did, I looked for mine. Very impressive. There's some very, very good schools on here.
Yeah.
They're all great, but
Yep.
Awesome.
I love them.
Yep. And recently, Mr. DeLongchamp and I attended the Auburn Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Award Breakfast. And happy to say, again, these folks made us very proud with Rebecca Dawson, Reese Levin-Savage, Sidney Lyons, and Chloe Norwood receiving the scholarships from the, from the Auburn Chamber. You know, I can't say enough, the Auburn Chamber has supported our kids now, oh, I forgot what they said. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars they've given over the years to our, our students. So, really a great organization and we're happy to be a part of it. We meet with them regularly and I know these students will make good use of this money. And we hope that as we get closer to graduation and maybe next time, we can share a full list of scholarship recipients. They're still compiling some of that, so it's down to the wire with some of that at the high school. But since this was already public knowledge, I wanted to share it with you, so.
It's great. Thank you very much to the Chamber. They really are amazing. You know, they come through for Auburn Youth and Family Services and they've never let us down with the scholarships and they're just a great, a great group to work with.
For the share, they also do the Chamber grants, the mini grants.
Oh, yes, for our teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're really here for the schools.
Yeah.
They really are, no.
They kind of go unnoticed too. We don't really, so yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you to them. All right, on to business and financial.
Evening, everyone. In your packet, I provided a year-to-date budget report dated May 26th for your information. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Any questions or comments?
Cecilia? Okay, seeing none.
All right, I'll move along. Omnibus transfers, I've been working with Dr. Chamberlain and the leadership team with regard to the FY22 budget closure. And I'll have transfers for you at the next meeting. We were just trying to work through things and just wanted to, you know, make sure we had it all together. So I'll have probably a couple. I'm working on one right now and as we keep moving closer and closer to the end of the year, there'll be probably a few more. So I will bring those forward at the next meeting.
Great.
The next one is Major David Broder Foundation Award. Matt Watson, a member of Auburn Middle School faculty, applied and was awarded a grant in the amount of $900 to be utilized in offsetting costs to ensure that all middle, all middle school eighth grade students can enjoy their class trip to Boston. This year, the class, the eighth grade class is going to Boston. They'll take a duck tour. They're going to have lunch at Fannuel Hall. They're going to tour Fenway Park and finish off with a dinner dance cruise on Boston Harbor.
Ooh, wow.
Yeah, it sounds like an exciting day, so it'd be great. I'd ask your acceptance of this gift from the David Broder Foundation.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the check for 900 from the Major David Broder Memorial Foundation to be used for the Auburn Middle School eighth grade class trip.
Hey, any discussion?
I just want to say my daughter is going on that trip.
You have an eighth grader?
I did.
Don't remind me. Used to go to DC.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, they did in past years, but with COVID and everything, they were just trying to
Yeah. Keep them closer to home.
Right, right. But they're all excited. It's, it's going to be a great trip.
That's a jam-packed day, too.
Yeah, no, definitely. They've got a lot planned. Mr. Desto and his team have got it all under control, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, and thank you very much to the Broder Foundation. They really, they're always, you know, thinking of the kids.
They're very supportive of the David Broder Foundation, our staff. Every time our staff reach out, they're always there to help out, so it's great.
Absolutely. Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion. We had a motion, but we need to vote on it.
Oh, yeah.
They went to discussion.
No, that's okay.
Yes, I think that was my fault because I made the motion before the discussion.
I have no idea which order it goes in, to be honest.
That's okay.
As long as we get it done.
Mandy Williams will keep us on.
Mandy, you got that. Thank you very, all right, thank you. Yeah, just kick me, Meg.
Come on.
That one too.
Okay. I, I swore I thought we voted on that. I'm ready to go.
All right. Yes.
I know this is our father, perhaps, but a citizen of Auburn, from the area from here. I just feel like talking about scholarships. I have a scholarship, I suppose, so this year will give, I give my family, I have given a thousand dollars. And my mother and father, for this scholarship. And I can leave all the high school, and I'm very proud to do that. And this year, it goes, it's already on, it's already put on the plaque. It's totally dollars, it's a thousand dollars.
Oh, wow, that's amazing. Thank you.
I'm very proud of this scholarship. I wonder if it exists, I just want to throw that. I'm sorry, I'm going to do your office.
Don't be sorry.
We'll make you appreciate it.
That's wonderful that you did that.
Yeah, that is great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
The students have offered a very lucky
They are.
Scholarships that
Yeah.
They work hard for them, so
Yeah.
There's a lot of expectations.
So you said 16th year?
Yeah, I started in 2007. And I think it was the late Saunders son.
It was.
And then we ended up with 16 years of
$16,000 then. Yeah.
That's amazing.
Oh, that's fabulous. It's great.
It's supposed to be in perpetuity, so when I'm dead, it'll be a two.
That's great, thank you.
Wonderful.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I'm pretty proud of it. I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I can tell to stick it in.
Well, that should do it.
News all the time.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I spoke with Amy Sampson this morning and about something else, and she was saying that they were busy working on getting that program and everything ready for the graduation, so the level of scholarship information, so that's great.
Great. Alrighty, okay, are we done?
That's it for tonight.
Okay.
Jam-packed, uh
Yes.